Everybody and welcome to the regularly scheduled meeting of the Los Angeles City Council. Today is Wednesday, the 18th day of June in the year 2025. My name is Marquis Harris Dawson. I serve as President of this council. Public comment for this morning's meeting will be taken in person in this chamber.
In a moment in time, when our community continues to be targeted racially profiled, and frankly abducted across the country, she did something very profound. And this morning I have with me Neza, also known as Vanessa Hernandez, who did something incredibly remarkable. And it's remarkable because in a moment in time, when so many people are remaining silent, she took the platform that she had and she showed us what she was made of. You know, there's a, there's a, there's a practice that I enjoy or that a lesson that I like to remind myself is that if you want to be disappointed by people, expect them to do the right thing. But when people show you who they are, believe them. And in a moment and in a city where we celebrate the fact that we are a majority Latino city, it shouldn't be a major incident to speak the language that is frankly as used as English here in the city of Los Angeles, and that is Spanish. She made a remarkable, she took a remarkable stand. When many sports figures will take a knee and in this country where peaceful protests was something that we honor, I couldn't believe that it was a moment that caused such drama for her to do something that was frankly adopted and commissioned by Franklin Roosevelt was the rendition of the Star Spangled Banner in Spanish. After, in fact, in 1945, after our country had, and frankly, the world had endured such incredible racial divide and all of the impacts that we still recognize today, whether it was the internment of the Japanese during a very volatile time in our world's history. We are in an inflection point here in this country and we are watching the racial profiling and targeting of Latinos and all immigrants across this country. And I want to say thank you because I'm proud to work in a city and serve on a council where we understand that we matter because we are the majority of faces in the city of Los Angeles. We are what keeps this economy moving across this country. We are what makes Los Angeles strong. And I was incredibly proud to see Neza take her moment in her performance at Dodger Stadium and sing the national anthem, El Pendón Estreado, for the world to hear. So ladies and gentlemen, it is my great honor that we have with us this morning here in the Los Angeles City Council chambers, Neza, to perform El Pendón Estreado. And if you'll all please rise.
Yes, please rise in the auditorium.
Thank you guys so much. Hello, hello, testing. Hello, 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 can you hear me? Hello? Cool, testing. Thank you guys so much for having me. I'm a little shaky after Councilwoman's words. Thank you so much, but here we go. Me da pue des ver al sol tir clarear. Lo que erguido se alzó cuando el sol se ocultaba. Y sus franjas y estrellas en el rudo luchan sobre recio paluarte. La ardor ondulaba. Y las bombas lanzas suro y esa explosión. En la noche dio a ver que aitaba el pendón. El pendón estreado tenemos la feliz. En la tierra de balas es el libre país.
Thank you colleagues, thank you Neza. And this is just a reminder, folks, is that everyone has the opportunity to show up for our community and I please ask you and encourage you to do so. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much, Neza. Thank you so much, Councilwoman Rodriguez, for getting us off to a great start this morning.
You know, five years ago, at the height of the civil unrest in 2020, I introduced a motion to officially recognize Juneteenth as a holiday in the city of Los Angeles. And on June 20th, 2022, we made history. Los Angeles formally commemorated Juneteenth for the very first time. So today I'm standing here with a great deal of pride. It means everything to help bring the spirit of Juneteenth right here to chambers today. Faith will be performing the Black National Anthem, Lift Every Voice, and sing. I invite everyone to please stand and join in.
Lift every voice and sing till earth and heaven ring. Ring with the harmonies of liberty. Let our rejoicing rise high as the listening skies. Let it resound loud as the rolling sea. Sing a song full of the faith that the dark past has taught us. Sing a song full of the hope that the present has brought us. Facing the rising sun of our new day begun. Let us march on till victory is won.
Thank you Faith for that very moving performance. Let me be clear, Team Price stands firmly in support and in solidarity with our immigrant communities.
My fellow ensemble, thank you.
There is a possibility, although I hope that we don't hear this, but there's a possibility that you might hear some offensive comments during the public comment period. Some of them potentially very offensive.
Hi, I'm Angela Birdsong and I'm the Housing Rights Organizer for LACAN. I'm here today in support of tenants from the 17 buildings recently purchased by Hope for Affordable. Two weeks ago, we submitted a demand letter here at City Council addressed to all of you, the mayor, property management, housing department, and the housing authority. Our demands are immediate onsite lawful mail delivery for all 15 buildings, restoration of 24/7 security, not armed thugs, not intimidation, but tenant protective presence. I am also here to, once again, ask the City Council to direct the Los Angeles Housing Department to execute the Stay House L.A. contract as you approved on April 25th. The city cannot afford to worsen this housing crisis by stopping stay housed L.A. services that educate tenants of their rights, protect tenants, and also provide rental assistance. I hope you hear me and I hope you hear us. Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Aaron Taxi. I'm here representing the Hollywood Chamber of Commerce and our over 650 organizations that we represent located in one of America's greatest tourist hubs to express our songs, our strong support for bringing tourism kiosks to L.A. Hollywood welcomes millions of tourists every year and especially with the Olympics coming, we need strong initiatives that will allow visitors and residents to seamlessly move through the city and take advantage of the navigation system, event calendars, local business directories, free Wi-Fi, and other benefits each kiosk will offer. Benefits that are customizable to each city council district and each neighborhood. In addition to strengthening our region's tourism ecosystem and supporting local businesses, this program is projected to generate hundreds of millions of dollars for the city through the life of the contract. On top of that, the city will not have to pay a dime to implement or maintain this program. We ask for the support of the Council for Tourism Kiosks and thank you for your consideration.
Okay, so for the first two, I want to speak on one and two with these always giving away public easements and public areas. I want you guys to get in the habit to not do that because it's our property, like land. You can't keep getting land, land is, you know, so why get rid of any land, you know? Because then I'm worried that when Scientology, if they ever try to do their street vacation, that they're going to come here and you just have this constant, yeah, here's yours, here's yours, passing it out, that they're going to say, well, you need to give us ours. And no, because then what that does, they would just blockade it, block it. And, you know, nobody would be able to try to continue to reach the people on the inside who are desperate to get out of that cult, but they feel they can't. So no street vacations, no easement, anything, just stop doing that. It's not necessary, so I'm going to ask you to please stop doing that. And then the one about the fire, yeah, if we're still in an emergency, I mean, you know, I would trust, you know, like, okay, then, you know, of course we had to continue, I guess. But the only thing is, is that Bob is on that and I have a little bit of a tiff with Bob right now because he's, A, he's probably not even listening, which is usual. The only one who I know who consistently listens to is Ms. Hernandez, listens all the time, except right now, I called her finally. And, and City Attorney always listens, but Bob, what he does that bothers me, so I don't want to vote yes on any of his things right now, is that he puts public comment at the end of his meetings that he chairs, you know, and it feels like prior restraint to me and I don't appreciate it. And I don't appreciate that it makes me have to go home on the, on the subway at like, you know, at the rush hour, which makes it harder for me, you know, to try to avoid, I don't want to roll on people and I want a good spot, you know, I want a spot. So I'm saying no to anything that Bob is doing right now. Now, if Bob would get his act together and listen, then I may change my mind on that. The other one I want to talk to is about the kiosk, okay? Again, you're adding more things and more structures that will get in people's way, especially people like me in chairs or people, you know, it's just more things to triple and more things to bump into, more things to tag, more things to, you know, and I understand information and stuff, but why not have it as an app or some other way? Why keep making our space smaller and smaller and smaller? And, you know, and, and, you know, and I'm saddened that we finally, that Ms. Hernandez finally for the first time is not listening, finally got her and, but I'm not happy. She owes me an apology now because she knows how it makes me feel. I want her to listen. I want you all to listen, but I've pretty much given hope on a lot of you, but not Mr. McCosker. He's still, I think he's still my favorite, Mr. McCosker.
General Public Comment?
First of all, I want to say shout out to Smokey Scan. I appreciate having my Smokey Scan family with me as we, you know, sit here before you all because they helped me, because then I could go on replay later and really get a good look as to what all your shenanigans are because he has that good view. And so I appreciate Smokey Scan for that. And Mr. Nazarian, you got to do better, man, because you're my guy. See, he's not even listening, he's my rep. What if I'm sitting here telling Mr. Nazarian, I might be talking about stuff in our area? And I am, there's a tree that needs to be cut that they will not cut. Okay, he's not listening. So anyway, we had a beautiful protest, okay, at Al Ron Hubbard Way, you know, and I am grateful that it was filled with love, peace, and we worked really hard to talk to the people inside that building to let them know that we are their lifeline should they want to get out, because we know many of them do. Many of them, they get in trouble for even attempting, they can't just walk out of that building. I don't know if you are aware of that. And we want a wellness check on Phil Anderson, please. Thank you.
My name's Janay and I'm strongly against this kiosk RFP. Can you really call it a request for proposals if only one company is pushing it and all letters refer to it as the ICke Kiosk Program? I'm also really worried about data sharing and privacy. Like ICke has a really questionable history with data privacy and ethics. And it's kind of like, do we really want another private company collecting data from passing cell phones when the federal government is determined to weaponize data against us? The ACLU of Washington has also raised significant concerns about the use of cameras, scraping cellphone data from people walking by and then sharing that data with third parties. But most importantly, why do we need this? We already have an advertising program in the public right of way that provides real public benefits and a lot of money to the city. So I don't think we should trust ICke. Thank you.
We would like to know and if you please, please can speak to someone about our mail. We haven't received it as January. We have important letters, especially from the housing authority and the social security department. Is there any way that anyone can help us to finally get our mail going? It's very important. And also the health issue where we live at, at the produce apartments.
Thank, a staff member will come down and speak to you about, about your, the mail issue and get your address and help follow up on that case.
Thank you, it's all appreciated.
You're welcome.
God bless you all.
Next speaker.
Good morning. I am here today as a member of the LACAN family and resident of Isabel Harado's Council District 14. With every due respect, out of conscience, out of good conscience, I must reprimand this body in its dereliction of duty and complicity with the growing moneyed and foreign interests to clear constitutionally guided mandates. In particular, I stand with those of the 17 buildings recently purchased by Hope for Affordable L.A., also known as HAWLA, to remind this committee of my and LACAN's relentless campaign for housing justice and to the council's duty to all of its citizens. Our two simple preliminary demands today, tomorrow, and week after week will not waver until they are met. They are as follows. First, legally mandated mail service. Be restored immediately onsite. Second, we demand a restoration of 24/7 security, not armed thugs, not intimidation, but real tenant protective presence across the 17 HALA portfolio. Please help us fight this dimming light of the soul of this country embodied in our preamble in the service of the general welfare of we the people, not the moneyed interest.
Speaker, we have to move on to the next speaker. As you can tell by the gentleman who is standing at the podium, this is one of the times where I'll just remind everybody that offending you and offending everyone around this horseshoe is likely one of the goals here. The only way in which they win is if you let them and interrupt their public speaking time, which forces us to enforce the rules. So I would ask that everybody for your continued patience. And with that, Mr. Herman, you have three minutes for the items and one minute for general. Go ahead.
Muchas gracias para importación, pinche puto negro abogado. Usted ya sabe que nosotros queremos nada con pinche inmigración.
Wait, thank you very much. You are a fucking attorney, you know that we don't want anything related to the fucking immigration issue.
Y es un pinche puto cabeza de melón.
You are a fucking man, watermelon head.
So this is not on the agenda. This is your first and only warning. Please stick to the agenda items or I'm going to move you to general public comment.
Budget Finance Committee, everyone. For the record, the program grants that this institution illegally abuses grants and bonds and their interpretation as criminal enterprise Rico to rip off the public. The physical impact statement states that the reports-
Speaker, which item are you speaking to?
Got to be telling you, fool.
What is the number of the item that you're speaking to?
Why you running the motherfucking clock? I'm on item 22, you stupid bitch.
Great, well, guess what? Item 22 is not open for public comment, so this is your last and final warning. Stick to the items that are open for public comment or I'm going to move you to general.
33 asshole, how about that one on the comments?
You're welcome to speak to 33, go ahead.
That fucking white nigger up here talking about public right of ways and the maintenance of these kiosks is unacceptable ball. The installation of God is our prior priority in America. We have consideration against McCocker Buckethead and that goddamn indicted soon price in relative RFP installations for maintenance because we don't want your demands. We the public make demands, we order you what to do, fool. In my other minute regarding the commission of Board of Harbors, fuck Board of Harbors. On item 31, item 32, you want numbers? How about item number 30, exemption Board of Airport Commissioners? Fuck the fentanyl that you're bringing to this country, Biden and you stupid ass attorney. That's number 30, dickhead. See, there's just so much information, everyone, so much to talk about here. On item of housing, item of the budget, item on the airport.
Okay, so this is not on the agenda specifically. It sounds like general public comment. I'm going to move you to general public comment where you have one minute. Go ahead.
Sabbath bloody Sabbath, what do you hear? Smokey Scan is listening and the public wants to hear. George Buzzetti demands some healthcare. Where is the fucking mayor who can bring him his healthcare? That's called Black Sabbath and this world is black. This world is a Sabbath, taking away our rights to communicate about immigration. If you want to be here in my country, the seminal country, we are the first motherfucking Indians to keep you fucking Americans out of our Florida Gatorlands. Remember that. Fuck you, groat, fuck you asshole.
Next speaker and members of the audience, I really do appreciate, or we really do appreciate your patience. We should not be hearing from Mr. Herman again lest he interrupt this meeting and be subject to a warning and potential removal.
Thank you dictator city attorney for the prior restraint. So we're going to go straight into items one and two. And I want to explain to you why you should vote as not only just no, but a zero vote of confidence. Tell me why the city engineer, right, the city engineer doesn't even live here, has a UPS address here, lives over a couple of states and still gets California money, right? Doesn't contribute at all to the area that they live in, gets to actually have an input in these motions, yet doesn't actually provide any money back to the area that they're supposed to live in, just like many other LAPD cops, high ranking officers, just like Officer Rand over at the Hollywood Station, right? You got a UPS address, that's how you do it. I know your Airbnbs, I know where you guys are and you're not really here. And why is it that other states have laws mandating that you're supposed to live in the same city that you work in as a city official? So we'll move on, right, to addressing the easement part of that issue. Why is it that the city engineer continues to not write declarations supporting the prosecution of criminal entities like Scientology when they violate the public right of way by blocking with the illegal barricades that they don't get a permit for, that the city acknowledges was illegal, but yet they don't prosecute them in any sort of fashion? I know we have some deputies here in training for the city attorney's office. Maybe you guys should think about that and study up on your LEMC code. I sure should know all my 5609, 5611, and 5612 codes. Be great for you to know it too. Moving on right now to the item number 29, the Palisades Fire Emergency Fund. Why is it that the only thing Mayor Bass seems to care as an emergency is if wealthy billionaires go up and smoke? And it's not even that they were there, it's just some of their rich assets that they use for tax write offs went up and smoked, but the people who are really suffering from the fraud such as the Skid Row Board Trust Fund that has been completely fraudulently mismanaged, billions and billions and billions of dollars keep getting hemorrhaged into nonprofits that are used as laundering money machines where all the council members here have a position in the various nonprofits, that they have a cushy nest that go after the fact. And right now, actually, one of those council members is being charged with felonies coming up this Friday. Corinne, I'll see you there, Department 32, 8:30 a.m., I believe. So I'll go ahead and report on that shortly thereafter. We have yet another communication from the Board of Airport Commissioners where, why is it that you can't even talk about the little runway that you're building, that little magic bridge, but nobody seems to get any sort of financial information on the list of expenditures that have gone on there? Moving on, yet another Board of Harbor Commissioners. Why is it that all these commissioners, right, already have their leave of absence, AKA I sign up my life involuntarily to the mayor and you can fire me at any time. You have my resignation letter the moment I take the job, but yet you sign on as an appointed position? That's not a position. You're beholden as a slave to Mayor Bass and whatever she tells you to do, you do it, right? I mean, that's what all these commission seats are, except for a couple like the Board of Public Works where you actually get a six figure salary to be up there, unlike the others who get about a $70 stipend to be there. We're going to talk about now general public comment. I just want to say to my one and only best friend, Heidi Soto, AKA Heidi Boo, I thank you for the frivolous and selective malicious prosecution. You are being investigated, there will be criminal charges at some point brought upon you. The city now knows that you are a Scientology simp, that you do political favors for Scientology, that you actively prosecute any activists that dare speak out against your political allies. And for that, I want to thank you Heidi because you really are the easiest way to find out who is actually involved in the city with Scientology. And that's what Scientology is, right? You use it as a way to smoke out all the other criminals, all the other snitches, and we now know that you're one of them. We now know that you're one of them, just like many other snitches here, one of my favorite being Bob. I just love how he has his steak fries every day on his plate. He never misses a B. It's always eating steak fries or falling asleep at every meeting. So for that, we thank you, Bob. We thank you for your consistency and again, thank you Prime Minister City Attorney for your prior restraint.
Good afternoon or good morning, whatever time it is. I'm a little bit discombobulated from all of the screaming and the profanities and I just hope that now everybody sort of settled down. So those of us who have some very important things to testify on can testify.
Which items, and completely understand, again, appreciate your patience. It is a tough act to follow some of these folks.
Yeah, really is.
Which items would you like to speak to?
Number 33, number 34, I know it's closed session, but can I speak about it in general comment?
So you, yes, absolutely. You can speak to it during general. So you have one, the way it will work, and this is for everybody as well. You'll get the items first, so you have one minute for item 33 and then the clock will reset to one minute for general. So go ahead.
Okay, my name is Wendy C. Rosen and I'm a member of the Coalition for Beautiful Los Angeles. Please refer this item, number 33, which is the digital kiosks, to Public Works for consideration. The RFP adopted by the city for prior bus shelter program that was run by CBS to co was a complete failure and did not deliver on its promises. The STAP RFP adopted by the city for the current bus shelter program is before you today for approval of a settlement so it can deliver on its promises. The RFP for the kiosk program must be reviewed by appropriate committee to address the issues and assure it can deliver on its promises and analyze the cost benefit. The big question is to the council, since STAP can deliver the kiosks, why are we even considering a separate program? Is it needed? Has there been a financial analysis to see if the claims that are made can be proved? I ask again, please refer this today to Public Works.
General Public Comment?
And my public comment on number 34 is I'm one of the parties to the settlement and we ask that you support the settlement today to allow the STAP program to move forward and resolve the litigation. Their transito vector program offers much needed shelter and shade for transit riders. But additionally, transito vector has gone above and beyond industry standards to lessen the impacts of digital signs by increasing the digital message refresh rate. The program offers unprecedented revenues to the city and is responsive to community concerns to ensure the program's consistency with the city's general plan. They've done this by reducing impacts to open space, parks, historic scenic sensitive biological and coastal resources by supporting the settlement- By supporting the settlement today, you would close a loophole that would open the public right of way to unlimited advertising. We have spent three years working. We ask today that you support this settlement. Thank you.
My name is Jessica and I am a member of LA Ken. I would respectfully ask for our district council member Isabel Hurrado, if she could kind of pay attention, this one's kind of important. I'm here on behalf of the tenants of the produce. Our main concern right now is obviously the mail, and I know that's gonna be taken care of, but security. We were asking for the restoration of the 24-hour, 24/7 security. We've had two women that have been, within the past year, have been physically, sexually assaulted. And we're just asking for help. I mean, we get it, we call the cops, they come through, but security-wise, we need more surveillance there. And also, like I said, the mail. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Maya Villa. I've been a nonprofit professional in downtown for over eight years and I'm also a theater artist who's worked in spots like the LATC. I'm also a big Black Sabbath fan, but I won't be singing today. I'll be talking about the Wayfinding kiosks that we're having. I think this is a big win for our city. We are always in need of funds and this will generate funds while spending few, if at all. And the biggest reason, you know, someone brought up about smartphones and why can't we have an app? The great thing about the kiosks is that I think they're accessible and they're inclusive for people who might be low-income and don't have smartphones, especially our unhoused neighbors. These kiosks will provide directories, transit, 311 alerts, and bring more funding to our small businesses, which I really care about, especially since they've been hurting this week from the curfews. So let's bring more culture to LA. I think the kiosks are a good move. Thank you.
Item number 29. The fires were in January. I don't know where this council has been for the last week and a half, but LA is in an emergency right now. And the only action I see you guys taking on ICE terrorizing our communities is a closed conversation that we're not allowed to comment on. But from January, now there's something that we can talk about months after the fires are over and after people's houses are destroyed. So I don't know why you guys are operating on a six-month delay here, but we need you to be in real time and be with the city and stand in solidarity in fighting and resisting against ICE. So I would love to see some actionable items and not just conversations that you're having with the chief of police, Jim McDonald, who's been brutalizing Angelenos in the streets for exercising our First Amendment rights. That's not okay. I would like to move on to general comment.
Okay.
I'm here on behalf of the free people of Los Angeles, a democracy, to ask, why has Jim McDonald's LAPD and Robert Luna Sheriff Department brutalized Angelenos for defending our neighbors from illegal government kidnappings by masked ICE thugs? While exercising our First Amendment rights to protect our community, law enforcement repeatedly declared Angelenos gathered peacefully in our public parks and streets protesting injustice, unlawful assemblies. While we chanted "ICE out of LA" and peaceful protest, officers charged us without warning on horseback, shooting us with rubber bullets, tear gassing us, and brutalizing us. As I speak, ICE is out in the streets terrorizing our undocumented neighbors, even kidnapping American citizens. The US military is pointed at us on US soil against our wills. Tyranny is here and we, the people, must defeat it together. Council, rise to this moment. Use your authority to have LAPD protect our rights instead of infringe upon them. It's unacceptable for taxpayer money to be used-
Speaker, your time has expired.
My name is Casey Madwin. I'm here today representing better neighbor, citizens for a better Los Angeles. We were disturbed to learn that the author of the motion for item, under item 33, Councilmember McCosker used to work as a lobbyist for ICSmart City, a company that's been lobbying for seven years to put kiosks on LA's streets. We believe this raises serious ethics issues surrounding the RFP process. There are also serious privacy concerns regarding collection of personal data by these kiosks, including data from minors. We urge the council to hold off on pursuing any kiosk program until these issues have been investigated. And now I'll move on to general public comment.
Okay, just give one minute.
I'd like to address item 34. I'm here again on behalf of citizens for Better Los Angeles. We're one of the plaintiffs in the lawsuit against the city regarding the STAP program. We filed suit over serious privacy concerns raised by the original STAP contract. In talks with Transito Vector, we've come up with an agreement that addresses those concerns and creates much stronger privacy protections for the people of LA. We support the settlement agreement before the council. Thank you for your time.
All right, fantastic. Good morning, council. Devin O'Shea here from the LA County Federation of Labor. Very good to see you all. General comment first. You all passed a very historic vote a couple of weeks ago and it's disheartening for us because $10 million is being spent to overturn it. Nonetheless, I wanted to thank you for your good work for the city of LA and its workers. Now on to item 33. I'm here speaking in support of item 33, the motion directing the city to release an RFP within 30 days for a tourism kiosk program. The kiosk program would generate millions of dollars of much-needed revenue for the city at zero cost to the city and good-paying jobs for Angelenos. Importantly, this program will complement, not compete, I say again, complement, not compete, with other revenue generating programs. Currently, 23 cities have already embraced this technology and each of these cities has had multiple advertising programs in the public right of way, seeing revenue remain steady or increase over year over year. Coming to speak during public comment is not something I typically do, but this program is important and we urge you to release the kiosk RFP within 30 days. Thank you, council.
We'll take four more names and we'll move, and we'll close public comment after that.
Perfect. So my name is Nigeria and I ride the metro regularly. I'm here to oppose the kiosk program because it seems like a greed-fueled Trojan horse to kill bus shelters. We have Trump in DC attacking transit funding and now the city of LA seems to be doing the same. We need to support the current bus shelter program rather than undermining it with tourism kiosks. Like, tell me why the tourists need more assistance than people that live in Los Angeles and take public transit here? I've seen these new bus shelters and they're a great idea, great shade, they look amazing, and they have seats that are usable. The problem is, we need more of them. Please vote against the tourism program and bring bus shelters to LA. I appreciate you. Have a great day.
My name is Barbara Brody from the West Side Neighborhood Council, speaking on item number 33. Our council does not believe that the interactive kiosk program belongs on the streets of Los Angeles, where the city has made a commitment to the STAP Transit Shelter Program. These structures are not a public amenity. Localities that have kiosk programs do not have transit shelter advertising programs, for if they did, they would be foolish because they would be having programs that compete with themselves for the same ad revenues. Are you all aware that the STAP contract contains kiosks as one of the program elements allowed in addition to transit shelters and shade structures? The possibility that an RFP could be released before any city public outreach to neighborhood councils is frightening. Who defines the scope of this project that will occupy our community's sidewalks? Our neighborhood council has seen the proposed IC maps and it is clear that they do not respect adopted ordinances, specific plans, and overlays. Neighborhood councils are your advisors. Why haven't they been presented this program? It has been circulating through City Hall since 2017. There has been ample time. We request that this program go to the Public Works Board, where they have jurisdiction over the public right of way, and planning should also be involved because they set sign policies and this program is not in accordance with the 2002 sign ordinance. We need a financial analysis and we need follow-up from City Attorney Mike Fuer's letter in October 2022, requesting an environmental review, a SEQA review. That needs to be done. We have to be able to know whether the claims for revenue are real. We have to be able to know what kind of an impact this will have on the STAP program. The STAP program provides community benefits. It provides shade and shelter. This program risks that commitment that the city says it meant. Tourists come to Los Angeles not to see digital ad kiosks on our sidewalks. They come to see the Hollywood sign, not advertising signs all over the place. They're blight and we don't want them in our neighborhoods. And we hope the council will send this program to the communities for input, so an RFP is not written in blindness like it was with STAP, which resulted in litigation. It's a bad decision. Thank you.
Okay, so I believe that concludes the community impact statement. You've also requested one minute for your individualized general public comment, so go ahead.
I did. Thank you very much. I respectfully urge the council to approve the STAP settlement agreement before you that represents a true win-win resolution to pending litigation. The settlement protects some of our city's most sensitive resources from digital advertising and its light pollution while clearing the way for the city to dramatically increase revenues from STAP, a program that not only delivers shade and shelter, but one that generates funds to provide significant community benefits and council district discretionary funds and support for the raised program's transit and pedestrian amenities. The city hopefully has learned and is, from the STAP program, that it is important to reach out to the public before releasing RFPs on programs that impact the public. That's one of the lessons of STAP and of this litigation. So we hope that you will support the settlement that has been three years in the making and is a win-win for the city. Thank you.
All right, so, George, you know the rules. Please do not disrupt this meeting. This is your first and only formal warning. Good morning. Which items would you like to speak to?
I signed up as WR. I will speak to all items and general public comment.
Okay, thank you for letting me know. You have three minutes for the items and one minute for general. Go ahead.
Okay, so starting off with item 29. Item 29 is related to the declaration of emergency from the mayor regarding the wildfires. This is the emergency where she could create a good recovery program, a program that's designed to rebuild houses and get things, get the community back together and everything in the wake of the wild, aftermath of the wildfires, but instead she's slow-walking everything. And it's mostly focused on making the city look fancy for the rich people showing up to the Olympics. The Olympics, no one's gonna show up for, but that's because of other reasons that I'll get to in a minute. But, but the Olympics, but it's mostly focused on rebuilding for the Olympics and it's, you know, not enough is going towards rebuilding communities in the aftermath of the wildfires. Okay, so let's move on to item 33, which is related to installing kiosks in the city's right of way. Now, there's some good stuff that could come from this. I mean, these kiosks could be used in a good way. I'm a little concerned that the city will not use them in a good way, or at least in a particularly useful way. I mean, they might not use it necessarily a bad way, but it may be kind of a useless, you know, you'll just get a little bit of information. But I mean, you could use these kiosks, you know, you could use them to help connect unhoused people to services. You could use them to help get people information on what they do if they have an issue or if they have, like, something they need. They could go outside, dump their trash and their bulky items and put it in the kiosk, I want you to pick it up or something. I mean, you know, there's all kinds of uses for this, but it's just gonna be used for random information probably. And probably surveillance. All right, let's move on to general public comment. So, over the last few, last week or so, you know, over the weekend, over the last whole week, we've seen continuous incidents of the LAPD being extremely violent towards protesters. They frankly come pretty close to killing someone out there. That's how bad it is. Firing less lethals at people's heads, just, you know, firing less lethals indiscriminately as a- Less lethal shouldn't even be used for crowd control at all, ever. Firing tear gas, using horses to trample protesters, all in the name of attacking people who are not okay with what ICE is doing. You all need to be speaking out more. And Marquise, your whole, oh, well, let people send a, submit a video comment. How about you restate call-in comment? You know people are-
All items and general public comment, please. I'll tell Groth whenever he's done with the business he's handling there.
You may begin.
All right, so I guess I'll start with item 23. This is regarding the installation and maintenance of interactive kiosks. The city likes to put this carrot of potential revenue in things when we don't really know what the revenue is actually gonna look like. And I don't know if maybe the information these kiosks are gonna give might be something that a person could be doing. The last budget proposed some layoffs and I know this kiosk is gonna be an ongoing expense to purchase, install, and operate. And the concerns someone brought up about lobbying and data collection make this motion kind of stink. So I would encourage the city to not approve this at this juncture. We also have items one and two regarding the city engineer and I'm glad a speaker brought up that the city engineer doesn't live in Los Angeles, apparently doesn't live in California, because it calls into question how close he is to these issues that he's making recommendations on. Also important brought up by the other speaker is that when we as the city are paying employees and they don't live in the city, that means that we're expending payroll and then that person is taking that money out of the city, buying homes or renting outside of the city, buying groceries and dining and doing entertainment outside of the city. So it might behoove the city to make some sort of requirement of employees, especially the highly, highly paid ones, that they should actually live in the community they serve because it not only makes sense as far as them being able to effectively do their job, but also just fiscally, it makes no sense to let that money exit the city, especially now. Item 29 is regarding the emergency declaration relating to the wildfires. One big issue relating to these wildfires was the subsequent rent gouging and it's still having a drastic effect on housing markets and renters and home buyers today. There have been over 5,000 rent gouged listings cited by independent groups like the Rent Brigade. Six charges have been filed, six. So out of 5,000 gouged listings, the city attorney has sought to prosecute only six of those property owners, real estate agents. I wonder if that's because she has received about $150,000 in campaign donations from the very rent gougers she's not prosecuting, particularly Angela Amon of Kilroy Realty. There's a lot of them, but that's one of the biggest donors, Kilroy Realty, to the city attorney. So no wonder why she doesn't wanna prosecute them. The money that they're getting from gouging is filling her pocket. Yesterday, Marquise made an odd suggestion citing fears about immigrant detention. Said that we should be given the option to record a video as a comment submission. What about phones? It wasn't an option. What about phones? What about phones? Just let us call in. What about phones? What about phones for remote commenting? We already have the capability. The people have repeatedly asked for it back, but you keep ignoring. What about phones for accessibility? We want a phone when it's our turn to speak. How come no one will challenge Marquise? To bring back phones, why are you so weak? Shout out Smoking Scan.
Good morning, Council President Miss Kavitch, and I'm here to speak on one, two, 30, general. Start with item number one. 你像一只飞来飞去的鸟儿， 你像一只飞来飞去的蝴蝶 Now, let's move on to item number two. Now, let's move on to item number three. Oh, no, item number 30, 3-0. 我非要这么做讲不停也偏要爱讲不停偏爱靠我感觉爱我不闪躲我非要这么做讲不停也偏要爱讲不停偏爱靠我感觉爱 Thank you very much, Councilmember Spindler, for the CD1. So I want to inform all of our Smoking Scan family member, Audit L.A. family member, that we are officially one year away from the general election of 2026. Get ready, come out, get ready to support our brand-new Councilmember Spindler. Are you tired of those Black Lives Matter taking over the street? Are you tired of all of those lawlessness on the street? Are you tired of all of the follow-home robbery? Are you tired of all of calling 911 10 minutes? Nobody respond to your home? Councilmember Spindler will fix all of the issue because Councilmember Spindler will restore law and order. Councilmember Spindler will make sure if you loot, if you riot, if you commit a crime, you will be consequence. There will be consequence coming after you. Thank you very much, Smoking Scan, and let's hope that everybody elect Councilmember Spindler for CD1 2026.
Next speaker. Morning speaker, which items would you like to speak to?
Yeah, item number 33. Tommy Favai, I represent IBEW Local 11, and I'm here to support the resolution moving forward. Thank you for, Councilman McOscar, for bringing this forward because, you know, creating these RFPs like this, it's very needed right now in, in the times that we're dealing with when it comes to unemployment and underemployment with our membership. And then our members that are currently working for, you know, the city of L.A. when it comes to civil service, and then traffic signal, and then electricians that are working here in the city. We need to create those jobs now. We can't wait. I know this is, has taken a while to come forward to this point, but please, Council, let's move this forward. 30 days, RFP, come back. Let's, let's get, let's get some boots on the ground so we can put our good electrical members to work. Thank you.
We are going to, per the city attorney's instructions, reopen public comment for 10 minutes. For 10 minutes for special one, which is a rule 23 that we have to, that we did not announce in the beginning, so we need to reopen public comment for special one, which is a rule 23 that we'll vote on today.
I, I guess I'll just take my one minute on special one. It's a fucking joke that y'all want to loan the LAPD $5 million for this. First of all, do we think we're going to actually see that money? How often do we appropriate funds from things like street services or mobile showers? Just a couple examples of things I've seen this body take funds from to then appropriate to the LAPD throughout the fiscal year. The LAPD gets almost half of our operating budget, so they should be able to cover this cost, and you should all be denouncing their response to this event. All of the injuries, most of the chaos that had resulted from these demonstrations are because of the LAPD. It's not because of the National Guard. It's not because of the military. It's not the federal forces that were deployed by the president. It's the LAPD and their, their trigger-happy agents and them violating people's constitutional rights to peacefully assemble. So you should all vote no on this item.
Thank you, Dictator Marquisi, for suspending the Brown Act. We love you for it, and I appreciate your prior restraint on my comment yesterday with Mayor Karen Bass. The secret meeting that she always seems to have, just like this constant suspension illegally of the Brown Act just seems to be a favorite topic of Governor Marquisi. So I thank you for that, sir. I will see you at the military rally soon. I appreciate you, Prime Minister Marquisi, for the prior restraint, for the secret meetings you hold with Mayor Karen Bass. Thank you for constantly trying to suspend the Brown Act. Thank you for your criminal activity. I appreciate it, Prime Minister Marquisi, and thank you again, Governor City Attorney Pumpkinhead, for the prior restraint yet again. I appreciate the prior restraint. I appreciate the illegal suspension of the Brown Act. I appreciate all the snitches in the room. I appreciate all the information. I appreciate all the UPS box addresses that I know you have. I appreciate the Airbnbs that I know you have. I appreciate all the little nonprofit boards that you sit on and the money that you launder. And for that, I thank you all for being the greatest criminals. I appreciate learning from you all. Thank you so much, Dictator Marquisi.
All right, let's open the roll on the findings for special item one. Close the roll, tabulate the vote. You're disrupting the meeting, you're, you're disrupting the meeting. This is your first warning, Mr. Herman. Mr. Herman, do not disrupt this meeting. Again, they're voting on the findings, not on the actual item. If you yell out again, you'll be subject to Rule 7 or Rule 12 and potentially be removed from this meeting. All right, let's open the roll on the findings. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
14 ice, one no.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen of Californian America. Thank you for the Brown Act prior restraints on our first amendment here. As you notice that the speaker before me was announcing all the great things that you've done for this city regarding the riots and all the secret meetings behind closed doors and those hidden session meetings by Mayor Bass like yesterday at 8:30 a.m. behind where Sambo up there is sitting. So I really appreciate Jim McDonald of LAPD because he finally listened to Donald Trump. He finally took the advice of Donald J. Trump. He finally realized that the National Guard, the Marines, hurrah, are here for our protection because we cannot depend on 15 dumbass officials and another fucking dumb first-black mayor woman. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Council President Miskavich. Let's continue about the LAPD overtime. Yes, just like every single speaker in this room stated loud and clear, we want more LAPD overtime because we want to make sure that every time we dial 911, LAPD has to show up within three minutes. Every time that someone is trying to rape me, now LAPD have to arrive there within three minutes. And everybody, every time somebody trying to take my heart, take my lung, take my kidney, everybody, LAPD has to arrive within three minutes. So I am here to stand in solidarity with all of the LAPD overtime, ICE overtime, you know, sheriff overtime, highway patrol overtime, military overtime, Marine overtime, whatever. So thank you very much, Smoking Scan. So if you want law and order, if you want to stop the discrimination against the Caucasian, if you want to stop, if you want to provide a Caucasian an equal treatment as all of the blacks, vote Spindler, CD1 2026, Smoking Scan.
You jokers are always breaking the Brown Act. Okay, enough of that now to the police. I would tell everybody listening who complains about the LAPD, they do a lot of bad stuff, okay? But do you really want the feds in here? I thank LAPD, L.A. sheriffs, and the CHP, and Chief McDonald, who planned all this because I, on the way over to the Royball Building, hours early, noticed how they had it all set up. And when I came out of the Royball Building, there was not
I'm sorry, can you hold his time?
Protected by the feds.
Sergeants, please remove Mr. Herman immediately. He is causing harassment and harassing members of the audience and has clearly lost control of himself.
Where's my time while that went on?
Your time was paused. You may continue.
You know what, fool. So on the way out, because the feds didn't protect it, I was almost killed, and you had martial law, fools. And you're taking my health care, fools. So we're going to put you all in prison. Thank you very much for making yourselves available.
So we have a loan to the LAPD to pay for their, for their, you know, continuous brutalizing of protesters over the last week or so. And we hear, you know, you keep saying, I keep hearing that the LAPD wasn't informed about it, but, about these raids in advance, but from what it sounds like, they actually were informed in advance about it because the, it's from what, I think DHS, ICE have been saying, they informed you. So even they, they sold you out. So they, the LAPD out, so the LAPD has been repeatedly assisting ICE over the last two weeks, and you're going to give them a nice big loan to pay for it and, as they brutalize protesters. When they keep, they keep lying. They shouldn't be assisting them, but they are. And when is this loan going to be paid back? Like, that's another question.
Reach out and touch somebody's hand Make this world a better, better, better place if you can. Good morning, everyone. Mr. Pancake from Los Angeles Community. Action Number City 14, Juneteenth, everyone. Isabel Geraldo, Unisys, how are you? Love you guys. CD8, Marquis Dawson-Harris. Supporting various tenants who reside in one of Leo Pusconasi's buildings who have made demands to issues such as unsite mail delivery, 24-hour security, working elevators, working elevators be met. Also supporting stay-house L.A. contract be removed, be renewed, excuse me. L.A., let's unite to Juneteenth. All power to the people.
Tell me when, okay. I think, I'm going to try to second-guess what Smoking Scan's question would be, and that would be, why does it seem like there is continuous and constant Brown Act violations, not only in this council, but Public Works everywhere? I have never, in, like, in all my life, like, the neighborhood council systems, they try their best to abide by it, but here, it's just like a constant abuse, and no one cares. I don't even know what the agenda item's really on because I can't see it. I couldn't get over there because I didn't want to crush people's toes. There was a lot of people. And so it's not fair. You guys got to do better. And I don't know what it's going to take, but I believe it's about the overtime. I'm for everybody getting their pay, you know? If this fine officer right here works overtime, I want him to get his money. But I also want you to give everyone their money. There's so many people being laid off right now because of mismanagement of funds and mismanagement of the city, and so people are losing their jobs. They want just their regular base pay. So I don't know how, you guys got to figure it out and do better. And Mr. Lee, start, listen, please.
Thank you so much. That concludes public comment on this item. So can we, Mr. Clark, open the roll on special one? Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
13 ice, two noes.
All right.